Select Boards Meeting, July 23, 2019. In attendance, Chairman Fox, Vice Chairman Moguln, Clerk Deedy, and Cindy Pendleton.
Thank you very much, and good evening. Welcome to Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, July 23, 2019. The first thing we have is public comments. It's anyone that is not on the agenda that would like to make a public comment to the Board, this is your opportunity. I'd ask that you please stand and state your name and address if you'd like to make a statement. Is there anyone here that would like to make a statement at this time? There is none. So, we are going to go right to, well, it says interview for the Assistant Town Clerk Treasurer Collector, but I think we should just invite you up, Sherry, because this is more like an introduction, because you've been here a while, and we know that you have a tremendous amount of municipal experience. Would you like to share some of that with the Board?
I started out in 1974 in an after-school program, summer program, at Springfield Housing Authority. From there, I went to Chigabe Electric Light, and West Springfield offered me, after six months, a better position. Working for West Springfield, I was there for 17 years, working for their Public Works. I got offered a better position in East Long Meadow, and I worked in the Clerk Collector Treasurer's office. And then, after I retired from there, because my husband got a position in Florida, and we moved to Florida, and I was there for seven years, and I worked for procurement for seven years. And then, we moved back, and I applied.
Super.
Super, and I love it.
So, if you get offered a better position within the next six months-
Oh, God, no.
-you're taking it somewhere else?
No, I am not, I am not, no, no. As you notice, I-
That's what I heard.
No, no, I'm not, absolutely not, no, no.
Tape's running, right?
Right, she said, no. We got you onto-
You got me onto, I'm not, no, absolutely not.
I heard you. I hold you to it.
You can hold me to it, sir.
Only you're leaving errors in the damn grave, you know what I'm saying? You're stuck there.
I'm going to stay there, trust me, I love it.
Mr. Moguln, do you have anything that you would like to add?
I don't know that I could follow that up, but, no.
Are you sure, sir?
I'm positive.
Does the Department Head have anything that she would like to say?
No, well, yes, she came in and she basically just ran with it, you know, she had some adjustment to do, because of, you know, the last place she came from, Treasurer Collector Clerk at East Long Meadow, they did things a little differently, but, other than that, she's just hit the ground running. It's been great.
Okay. Well, then, I think we just need to ratify something that has already taken place, if someone would like to make a motion to reaffirm.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Oh, yeah. The fun's just beginning.
Oh, it has. Thank you.
You are welcome. You brought the whole staff with you.
Wow.
I don't know if you want to wait, because there's a motion-
I don't know if he's sworn in or not.
For their office, further down the pack.
A motion to, if you want to wait just a second, Michelle, we're going to make a motion to keep the Town Clerk Treasurer Collector Application Pool active for one year for other staffing needs. Is that your request?
Yes, yes.
All right, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we're going to wait a couple of seconds here for the Finance Committee to show up, and then, we will be meeting with Ty and Bond. I guess we can, here, that, 2A, or, I'm sorry, why don't we do the, take care of the Payables, Payroll, Payroll in Minutes. Payables Warrant Number 2002B, dated 7/15/19, in amount of $3,333,928.29. Payroll Warrant Number 2002, dated 7/22/19, in amount of $240,135.76. And then, I need a motion to accept the minutes of 7/10/19.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, we can-
There was a special warrant today. I don't have the amounts, because I wasn't here, but do you want to-
I believe it was like 95 and 95 would be $190.
Okay.
It was for the Town Clerk and Assistant Town Clerk to attend a conference, I believe, at UMass.
Okay. I'll get the right information.
Okay. All right, we can go to the Action Folder, 2A, from Chief Kevin Bishop. This is, oh, no, that's going to be for information for the appointment we have for the Reserve Officer Interview. We can skip over that.
Yeah, why not?
We can go to the request from Southwick Inn for their annual Block Dance, or Block Party, that is going to be held on August 4th, no, excuse me, Saturday, August 3rd, 12:00 p.m., to Sunday, August 4th, at 2:00 a.m. They're going to be outside until 10:00 a.m., and this is their annual request. And I believe it's all been reviewed-
Yep.
-by the police, by the fire, by the Board of Health. I believe everything's been-
Everything's done.
-signed off. So, Mr. Deedy, I think you're going to have to make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
One abstention, please.
One abstention, and Vice Chairman. And we can sign this. Doug, you're not signing this, right? Okay, number four, and we got our DPW Director here, from DPW Director Randy Brown. This is concerning bids to do the paving on Granville Road from College Highway to Bugbee, Jeffrey Circle, and Tammy Lane, and also to do some cold-in-place asphalt recycling on North Long Yard Road. And Randy has made his recommendations. Do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, we talked to you, I don't know, maybe a month ago, we had a work session. We identified the projects we want to move forward with paving for this year. Those are the projects, most of them anyway, so a couple others to bid out, but those are the ones that can move forward with it the quickest. So, we got the bids in, we got them coming in, and this thing was pretty good, so.
Did they come in close to what you were thinking?
Yeah, they were a little bit higher, but not being too much, no, right around the budget, so. The numbers we're talking about at the work session are still in play.
So, it's, okay, it's close enough.
I still have to get, I still waiting for some numbers on the drainage work, you got a component to it-
Right.
But, I'm hoping they'll be, you know, where we expected them to be.
All right, so on the Granville Road, Jeffrey Circle, Tammy Lane, the low bid, and the bid that you are recommending, and am I pronouncing this right, Andrick?
Andrick, yes.
Andrick, for $442,635. I need a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And for the cold-in-place asphalt recycling bid for North Long Yard, looks like it's Seal Coating, DBA Indus?
Indus.
Indus, of $501,303. All right, so I need a motion.
So moved.
I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, I'll tell you what, why don't we sign this page with the prices on it?
We can start on the presses here.
All right.
Yeah.
We're going to do Take 2, and start all over.
You start all over again.
Or, we can just let Hope listen to the tape.
There we go.
All right, 5A is from Town Accountant Laura Fletcher, and this is concerning a accounting, concerning our building inspector, authorizing him to use 80 hours of sick bank retroactively, because apparently, we had some little confusion on anniversary dates when he was out. Has everybody had a chance to read it?
Yep.
Any problems? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll sign it and approve it.
That's why it's important to remember the anniversaries, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
That's your treaty?
That's the original, right here. Oh, you got it? Yeah. Okay. All right. All right, we have, well, you might as well come up to the table, and Ty and Bond might as well come up to the table, Randy, and get everybody up here. Get as close as you can. We do have some copies, I don't know.
Mr. Bob?
Yep.
I'm guessing she's used to it.
All right, everybody understands what we're talking about. We're talking about the, I think we, Town Meeting approved $50,000 to do the preliminary study. Ty and Bond was hired to look at all our public buildings, and we did meet with them already concerning, and going into some greater detail on the Fire Department Building. And now, we're going to do a review of all the buildings here, so if you have one of these packets, please share. So, why don't we just do a rough introduction?
Bob Johnson.
Pete Bosky, Ty and Bond.
Peter Papin, Ty and Bond.
Terry Doherty, new Finance Committee member.
Bob Ratchek, Finance Committee Chair.
Randy, go ahead.
Randy Brown, DPW Director.
Kerry Mish.
Woof! That's a rough introduction.
Finance, our general finance.
Okay. Mr. Deedy, Mr. Moguln, myself. All right, you have the floor. How would you like to approach this?
I think I'm going to immediately turn it over to Pete. We pulled together these, the reports, we're looking now to put a final stamp on this thing, that's been sitting as a draft for some time. I think the key to all the discussions is the giant wish list.
Right.
The spreadsheets that are made up for each of the five buildings, and summarized in the form of multiple projects, that are set up in increments of immediate concerns, you know, 1 to 5, 5 to 10, 10 to 20 type arrangement. But Pete led this effort, and I think it's probably best to run us through this again.
Right?
Yes, I guess so.
Eh! That's happened.
Yeah, all right. Has anybody been able to see the draft report that we have put together? Finance Committee folks, have you seen the draft report?
I haven't.
You're talking about that little booklet?
Well, the-
Little wasn't the term I heard, but, yeah.
Yeah. And the, you know, and these spreadsheets that we've been talking about are in this book. It's sort of like the, it's the written version. Quite frankly, I work almost 100% off of these sheets. They're, they include all the work product that needs to be considered.
Are these sheets prioritized?
They are prioritized, yeah.
Okay.
So essentially, what we ended up assembling was spreadsheets that deal with line items by category of civil engineering, architectural, you know, structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, and categorized each of these components that then, we utilized to tabulate a listing of, by project code, for each of the buildings. And if you want me to take a step back a little bit, I mean, essentially, we have, we made a conditions assessment for, you know, five of the town buildings. So, we did the Town Hall, the Fire Headquarters, the Police Station, Public Library, and the DPW Building. In terms of the assessment, we considered site civil aspects of each building, architectural, structural, fire protection, plumbing, mechanical, and electrical. So, each of those disciplines, we took a look at the building and evaluated each of those aspects. We also considered, in that assessment, building code implications, which we found anything that was deficient, we were going to obviously recognize that and include that in the report. We also assessed the buildings for handicap accessibility and ADA requirements. 521 CMR is Massachusetts State Accessibility Code. ADA is a federally enforced accessibility code. I mean, most often, what happens is the Building Department will only enforce 521 CMR, they do not enforce ADA. The two are pretty much close together, and they generally work hand in hand.
But does that mean that we end up being out of compliance, if we're only enforcing the CMR?
The, if there is something that is ADA required, you could be out of compliance.
And it could be an issue.
Yes. I did not find any of that. I think in general, everybody was fine. The code issues that we came up with are more associated with the fact that over a period of time, the codes have changed. So, for instance, where you have curb cuts, the warning pad is required. In some locations, we don't have those warning pads, so it's a matter of, okay, we've got to get caught up to speed and deal with that. So, we've tried to identify where those infractions exist, so that you guys can put it out of the line item and deal with it when finances will permit. Relative to the civil, site civil aspects of the assessment, we were looking at pavement, we were looking at storm drainage, septic systems, and then, that site accessibility component, to make sure our rocks were accessible. We had appropriate transitions between sidewalk and entrances, so forth and so on. The architectural side of the fence, we looked at exterior building envelope. So, we were looking at our existing exterior walls, our window openings, doors, roofing. We also considered the building interior, looking at, you know, wall assemblies, doors, hardware, finishes, egress components, to make sure those things were all up to speed. Rel to the building, again, we were focusing on accessibility requirements, to make sure those components were in place. Structurally, we were looking at foundations, structural components in particular, that, you know, would affect the buildings in any particular manner. As we got into, as we get into some of the buildings, there were requests relative to additions or alterations or modifications to some of the buildings. For instance, with the Fire Department, they're looking for additional dormitory space. So, we took a look at one of the mezzanine areas to see, yes, in fact, it could work, and these are the, you know, take, consider the structural aspects of it to make sure that it was doable. For instance, Town Hall, when you folks constructed your senior center, that plan was designed to accommodate a second floor. So, it was asked that we take a look at what the code requirements are today, and evaluate whether or not what that was designed for is still applicable, and is still capable of being done. Other aspects that we were looking at were, you know, fire protection for its equipment, fixtures, devices, and all those systems associated with it, plumbing, same thing, HVAC, and electrical. So, each of those components, we had engineers onboard reviewing, assessing the buildings, looking at all the equipment, and providing evaluation of that equipment, and then, in the report, providing recommendation. When you look at the, that larger spreadsheet, that's where we kind of compile the line-by-line, those items that we looked at, that we considered, and then, provision of the recommendations.
Okay, does that, I'm sorry, does that, yeah, yeah, but, does it follow, like you got Cat A on-
Yes, let me, I'll explain that to you right now, because I get it. I've been looking at it for a long time, so. The way we addressed the recommendations for this, we were initially establishing, you know, a category, so that we could evaluate and establish a list of, or priority listing for those components that we were addressing. We had I for immediate, so that was identifying those items that we assessed that we felt were immediate, you know, influences. We had to do something with them within the first year, say. Category A looked at items that happened between the, you know, first year and fifth year. B was a category that went from 6 to 10. C, 11 to 20. D was that category that dealt with things beyond the 21-year mark. E dealt with new building aspects or alterations that were requested as part of the evaluation. Relative to your buildings, and I'm going to just talk about the architectural stuff quickly, we talked about the interior, and it seemed to me that, looking throughout all your buildings, you guys have done a phenomenal job at providing, you know, good routine maintenance. So, I think from a standpoint of the interior finishes, they're top-notch. I mean, it's just a, as long as you maintain and, you know, proceed with your normal maintenance system that you're using, you shouldn't have any trouble. On the other hand, we've got the exterior of the buildings that exhibited serious issues in some cases, a fire station being the most prominent one. As I explained to the last group, one of these items that continues to come up on these exteriors that we have to pay attention to, as, you know, for your house, painting your house every 15 years is pretty much a mandate, or else you'll have a bigger nightmare beyond that, trying to prep and repaint. Sealant, joint sealant, for windows, for expansion joints, joints between stone and differing materials, that's one of those items you have to address ritually, 10 years. Nope, you don't really want to go beyond that. You'll see telltale signs of, you know, usually urethane sealants will discolor, so if it's a nice red brick sealant, if you start to see that become more pink, and all the, pretty much to white, that sealant is deteriorating. If you get a closer look at it, you'll see that it's already starting to fail at the edges. As soon as you start to let water into your wall systems, you're going to have problems. Fire station is a perfect example of that. Once you ended up getting water into that system, once the sun hits it, you start to drive that moisture back through the masonry, it draws all the salts in the mortar, and you'll end up getting all kinds of white efflorescence over the exterior. So, that's all a result of moisture penetration that we don't want to have. Let's see, how do I want to do, I guess just continue with the other buildings. For the Town Hall, in general, things are in reasonable shape. I know that with the windows, for instance, we've had problems with the gasketing for the glass popping out. There was a point in time, speaking to a gentleman at Eastfield Glass, that the products that they were using, the vinyls would shrink. And as a course of that, you'd end up finding that they would either fall out, if you look at a couple of the windows, you'll see that that gasket is moving its way out from the glass pocket. Speaking to them, there's line items in our documentation that'll tell that, you know, give you a number based on lineal footage, that you can replace that. So, you don't have to replace the entire window, you don't have to replace the glass, per se. It's a matter of spending a few bucks to get new gasketing reinstalled. So, you pull out everything that's there, put the new gasketing in place, and that would, you know, solve one air infiltration that you're conceivably getting as a result of having a loose system in there. And then, as time goes on, the window, insulating glass only has a life expectancy of about 15 to 20 years for the argon gases inside. So, eventually, if you have the seals break, you'll start to see clouding of those panels. That's the only time you really need to start considering replacing the glass. These windows are young enough that they are thermally broken, so you shouldn't have any problems with the, with the actual window frame itself. So, I think in general, that part of it is fine. Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, no, you're fine. So, when you looked at the windows, especially in the Town Hall, did you, when you came up with pricing to repair or replace-
Yes.
Did you look at it from the historical aspect of the building as well?
I, from the standpoint of window historical aspect?
Mm-hmm.
In what respect? These windows aren't here.
Yeah, well, when we replaced the windows in here, there was a, there was a lot of concern shared by the Historical Commission relative to the windows, and making sure that they were going to be historically accurate for the building.
The, I did not specifically address that.
Okay.
Okay? But, from the standpoint of windows in that category, depending on, there's a, there's a point in time that windows need to be addressed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? If those were replaced as historic windows, or if those are the original windows, one way or another, so they were replaced, they have a replacement window. Wood is easier to work with than the aluminum, you can repair that, can't really repair this, other than take a window in or out, if it gets damaged. For those, anything that's historic, that is a, you know, reproduction, you treat them the way you have to treat your windows of the house, and you've got to make sure they're maintained in terms of painting, make sure the perimeter seal, again, with the sealant is intact, but there, you know, I think that's something that is maintainable. It's just a matter of paying attention to it. When it gets in need of repair, you have to, you have to deal with it. I know those, the doors, there's some issues with them sticking. I think the, part of the problem is the weather stripping. It makes some of those doors a little bit difficult to open. I think that's a matter of adjustment. I think we just have to pay attention, have somebody come and take a look at them, make some adjustments with the, with the weather stripping, and you should be able to free up the motion on those doors to make them operate a little bit better.
Bob, you were looking for the CPC being a funding source for some of this-
Well, it was originally the funding source for-
For that, right, for those windows.
But, my concern was if we have a figure in here to repair and replace windows, we have to maybe budget a little bit more money if we're going to stay historically accurate and historically accurate.
Correct, that is, that's correct.
So, that's, I'm looking at strictly from a financial standpoint, are we, do we have a number that's going to be impacted by that?
I'm looking at it, can we pull it out of another pot, other, in general?
Well, that's, that's another discussion, exactly.
What, and one thing that we can do, and this is one reason why we're here, we've met with the other folks, you know, at our last meeting, and we've addressed some of those questions that they've come up with. So, this is something that we can, I can readdress relative to the historical nature of those windows, and provide some dollar amounts in there as another line item, so you could get something categorized for you.
Okay.
So, that's something that we can do. The, just staying on the Town Hall, how much time do we have?
Got about a half an hour.
All right, so I'm going to try and speed this up. The only other, the only other component to the Town Hall that is an issue, is that I did notice that you're starting to have some leaks at- I did notice that you're starting to have some leaks at the perimeter on the interior. There's a portion by a stair where it looks like some ice water backed up underneath the roof and stained some sheet rock. So talking to Carl about this, they've, you know, everybody recognizes that the report talks about the HVAC components in the building. They've reached their point of life expectancy, they're old. From a maintenance standpoint, they're of older technology, so now trying to get, you know, newer technology components to work with them, it doesn't fly. So that's one of those things you guys are going to have to consider, you know, in the fairly near future, that you're going to need to replace that stuff to be able to go on with normal routine maintenance. That stuff is up in the attic, and in order to access that and pull those things out, you conceivably are going to need to open up a hole in the attic, in the roof, to be able to get rid of them. So the thought was, when we packaged up the summary sheet, we tried to package up projects in a manner that would take care of that. So roofing replacement on this would not be done before your HVAC equipment was replaced, so that you're not duplicating here.
Okay, I just want to follow.
So there's not a duplication of effort. So the, so the thought is, when it, when you guys have the opportunity financially to afford this, you make your adjustments to your, you know, buying some new HVAC equipment. We cut open the roof, we install the new equipment, we patch the roof, and in conjunction with that, we provide a new, brand-new roof and gutter and downspout system. So it ends up being a kind of a lump sum package of effort, so you're not spending your money The other, the only other key component in this building deals with the elevators, that's the other snafu, unfortunately. Again, the elevator systems are old, we've got newer equipment, trying to maintain those existing elevators now is going to become a bigger problem, because as, as time goes on, they're phasing out replacement parts and all that to fit the elevators that you have. So there's a line item for this building, there's a line item for the fire station that talks about a rehabilitation. So basically, it'll rehab the car, your, what do they call it, the lanterns, the positions on your, on your floors, it'll deal with new interior panel, it'll replace the pump, it'll replace the elevator machine, and you'll be good to go. So the hoistway stays the same, you don't touch that. I think that ends up running into about $150,000.
That's for the fire.
That's for the fire. This building here has a four, you know, a few more stops, so yeah, there's conceivably going to be more for this. The unfortunate part with the fire station is that the elevators are running smooth, Swiss watch, no problems, it's perfect, perfect.
And the elevator here?
The elevator here, they, according to Bob, they have had problems with it, and I think that's one of those items that kind of, you know, pointed me in that direction of finding out a little bit more about these things. Spoke to the vendors that you folks use for your maintenance, and that was one of the key issues that they were coming up with, is as time goes on, they will not be able to maintain the, the equipment, because the parts won't be available. I think that pretty much does it for, for the town hall. There's a little, there's obviously a pile more information on the, on the building in the, in the spreadsheet. There's little things throughout the building that you can consider and take a look at, but I don't know if you want to move on to a different building.
Next one we have is police station.
Okay, so the, the police headquarters, that, again, is, is interior-wise, is in generally good shape. The only aspects that I found walking around, so, so the idea is that, from an interior standpoint, I wasn't focusing an awful lot on interior aspects of things, because once you made myself comfortable that people were paying attention and taking care of it, that becomes less of an issue. When you get to the outside, walking around the building the day of the tour, and, and the assessments that we did afterwards, the roof was exhibiting some problems. It had ponding around the roof drain. The roof was perfectly fine, it held the water in place, but the, it wasn't draining. So the recommendation made here is that you need to check your stormwater system there and make sure that those things run freely. The exterior of the building is in generally good, good condition. There's limestone decoration around those, the windows, limestone surrounds, those are stained pretty heavily, and so what I was trying to do is provide a, a package in there that would provide you with some masonry restoration work. You'd be doing general cutting and pointing, some sealant work where it was necessary, and then historically using the appropriate products to clean your stone and brick. One of the requests the police had, and this is relative to the handicap accessibility issues, is that they don't have a community room, facility to deal with, you know, meetings with the police and, and community, so the thought was to take two or three of the bays in, in the garage storage area that they have, and convert those into handicap accessible space, multipurpose kind of space, where they could run program, training of whatever they needed. So we evaluated that space structurally to consider, you know, removal of some columns that would conceivably impede layout for furniture, provided some numbers in that assessment to deal with those alterations for that space. The other thing that they were looking to do is make some adjustments to the Sallyport that they have. Presently, the size is large, one of the key aspects to, you know, officer-prisoner safety is to confine that area so they don't have a large space to be able to run off, keep it tight, so that you can control your prisoner better. They were talking about providing a partition to separate the Sallyport from the adjacent bay and turning that adjacent bay into a wash bay for their equipment, so they'd be able to pull their vehicles in and wash them down. That work in and of itself would require, I think, oil separators and all that other business to go along with that. So I think we've got numbers in that estimate to do that work. That would fall into one of those category Es.
When you described E, I mean, what was D, to add that as alteration?
D, D is, is all those components that, from the interior, if you wanted to go back and talk about carpeting, vinyl composition tile, flooring, looking throughout all these buildings, the only place where I saw issues with vinyl composition tile was in the, the fire station in their kitchen. That's taken a beating. And it's the, you know, the usual kid sitting back in their chair at the, at the table and making the divots in the, in the floor. So it's, it, yeah, 24/7, takes a beating. Everybody else's floor finishes, carpeting, everything was excellent. So the D category is the stuff that, you know, 20 years down the road?
Twenty plus.
Yeah, you can, you can, or, or when you get sick of the white paint on the wall and you want to change. I mean, it, it's more cosmetic in nature.
And the E category was alterations?
Is, is that, exactly that. Alterations, and then I think for, for the sake of Randy that was, I think, tossing in some numbers to do substantial renovation and, I don't know if he actually ended up getting you a number of the new building.
Some earlier drafts, I think.
Yeah, I'm not sure. What else is here? So we've got the fire station, that was the big, the big beast.
Yep.
Why don't you spend a little time with that, so the finance committee make sure they understand the urgency.
Get a feel for it.
Can we just write it down? The, you know, the sad part is that the building's actually a pretty nice building, I don't see that as being the problem. I think it was inherent in some of the detailing that was done, when I was looking at the drawings, there are problems with the way that thing was detailed. And one, one aspect I think we need to pay attention to, we looked at these buildings and provided, you know, identified problems that we see with, with the building. When you go about obtaining an architect to, to proceed with this work, it may be advantageous to you folks to do a study first off, to allow them to do more of a selective demolition investigation of that wall system, to see what has been damaged, what the problems are, you know, right in front of you, get a real evaluation of what's going on before you proceed with anything down the road. That way there, you spend a little bit of money upfront, get a more definitive answer and, you know, answer to the, or at least identify that problem more clearly and then provide an answer and solution. So when they proceed into doing the documents for it, they're not spinning wheels, they know exactly what they're attacking, they've got the consultants in place to do their job the right way. Fire station, as I was mentioning, when you walk around the perimeter, you can see that there's sealant joints that are failed. As a result of that, you can see up at the parapet, that's the stone coping along the wall, it's kind of a Gothic type detailing you have there along the gable ends of the building. You can see the, the mortar popping out between those stone and between the, the brick. So that whole upper half of the wall basically needs to be dismantled and then reconstructed. And we have to take a look at what the flashing conditions are in there to make sure that was flashed properly. You, you see that that's sloped, a lot of the problem happens down at the end where water's traveling, and you'll see a bulk of it happening right at those low points in the wall. You take a look at the window, you'll see damp, you know, peeling paint at the sill, you'll see some discoloration and some indication of water up at the head of that elliptical window that faces, I believe, the back, no, the front. The, there's evidence of brick being displaced above the door that leads to the balcony on the parking backside of that building. So there's a whole litany of issues that are all associated with that water getting into the building. That, given the way the roof is constructed, you're going to end up needing to dismantle a portion of that roofing to be able to get flashings and proper gutter installed, it's all built-in gutters, you've got the, the downspouts with the conductor boxes, those conceivably are, are fine, but all the other components need to be determined, you know, need to be refitted. One thing that's a big problem in that building, looking at the detailing, is that there's a violation of the insulation and vapor, air vapor barrier plane in that wall. So, you know, they're, what would you want to call them, they're, they're breaches, they're thermal bridges from the outside of the building to the inside. So you're going to generate condensation in the wall system just a result of that. They've placed the window too far back in relationship to where the insulation is, so there's a portion of that window sill that's going to be cold in the wintertime, and you've got the hot, warm, moist air inside, you're going to get condensation right in those locations. It's going to work its way into the, into the wall system and leave you where you're, you know, where you're at today. So that's the big problem. That's one of those buildings that I think you need to do something with quickly, or else you'll spend even a boatload more money down the road trying to rebuild the whole exterior. Fire station with the, the elevator, that's about the only glitch that I found there. The chief was talking about the, the coating on the, inside the bays for the, for the flooring, that is showing somewhere, that's one of those things that I think is listed in there as one of the earlier items to consider. The overhead doors, there are some glass panels there that are exhibiting that fogging, so those overhead doors are going to need to be considered at some point, be it full replacement or just replace the insulated glass panels as necessary. There are other issues mechanically with that that I'm not perfectly versed with, but there's concerns about the zoning, so that's one of those aspects with this. I think when you hire the person to go through and do your work, that there's conceivably a, an early study state that gives you a, you know, spend a little bit of money, evaluate it more clearly, more specifically to the problems, and define what the, you know, what that resolution's going to be so that they can proceed with their documents. You follow what I'm talking about with, with a study? Do you understand that mentality that I'm bringing to the table? This, what we did was a visual assessment. We are recognizing and identifying problems, we aren't exploring the problems in depth to provide appropriate solutions to resolve it. It's just a matter of giving you a broad spectrum of, you know, all these things are fine, these are some problems you've got to consider, mechanical systems are out of date, you're going to have to address that. You need your mechanical engineer that's going to be doing the work to sit down and work through all the logistics of how they're going to get that system to work the way you need it to work.
What did we spend, isn't it 600,000 that we allocated in the last, the last annual town meeting? Or something with the walls, is any of that?
Yeah, we approved some money for the fire department.
I think it was 600,000.
For the roof and that wall to do.
Was that?
I think it was that much.
About 100?
I think it was 100,000, because we knew we had to go and do, to his point. So the building study identified that there's a huge issue at the fire department. We still don't even know yet what it's going to take to fix it, so the 100,000, I thought it was 100,000.
I thought it was 600.
Was to, basically do what he said, was go in there and start peel back a section and say, okay, now we know it's 800,000 or a million-two to fix it, right? And, and what, what would all be involved in making that?
We can check on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll check on that. It could be designers, it could be designer services to proceed with the?
It was, yeah.
Actual architectural services to do the work.
What you're talking about ripping apart the, the masonry to get at, stuff and repairing that, and just kind of wondering what, whether that's part of it or not.
I think it was just to look to see what?
It's just architectural design.
Right.
It's, it's.
But that's kind of what we're talking about, right, that you're going to need that. So we have some money already allocated towards that by the sound of it?
Yes.
Just that roof and wall issue.
Right.
That, that was it.
Your coffee paid for.
Right, it's only a cup of coffee a day.
But it was, I think it was actually 300,000. I did the pros and cons for it.
We'll double check, we'll double check.
Whatever it was.
I'm sure it wasn't enough, but it was something.
But we got something.
We got something.
All right, so we know that's the problem child.
Yes.
Public library?
The public library, I think the?
That shouldn't need much at all, but we've been spending money over there keeping that place going good.
We got that carpet project for the next year.
Carpet project started here.
So see, that, that's.
We did siding.
Right. The, the only thing that was for me a big, a big issue there is that somebody was extremely liberal with the use of the mulch in the shrub beds.
Imagine that.
And, you know, to the point where it's, it's almost over the.
Killing the trees.
Well, it's against the building. And it's, you know, look at one of the, the storm drainage catch basins around the building, and, you know, this thing is normally about a two-foot catch basin, and I think there is probably about, you know, eight inches worth exposed. It's all wood chips. So I'm just suggesting that you guys might want to have that be adjusted.
We got a good deal on that.
Storm drainage.
We can donate it to DPW.
Yeah, there you go.
Mix it in with the asphalt.
The, the, I thought initially there was going to be bigger problems with the basement and moisture because of, you know, going down in the basement, looking up at the underside of the deck, it was all rusted, and I go, oh, got to move the server down in the basement. After talking to a structural engineer about it, considering it being down in that basement, it didn't feel damp, it didn't feel like what you would normally expect to see with all that rust. So that may have been, during the course of building that, they had a problem, had a little flood. So that may have been during the course of building that, they had a problem, had a little flood as, as, you know, storm water. And because of how that was constructed with volunteer services, that I think that that is probably the result of that moisture being in there during that whole construction. It hasn't changed, it's just there. So, I mean, one of the recommendations would be to try and clean it up as best you can and get some paint on there. That would help arrest anything from moving further if it were. But it seems to me that you should be able to provide a space to relocate that server out of the librarian's office, provide her more room, and you'd be fine. Shouldn't be an issue. I think we included some monies in there for dehumidification down there just to, as a failsafe. And I think you probably wanna condition the space to keep the temperature at a comfortable level for the equipment. Aside from that, I think that the only other thing, roof is pretty much at its due date. I think it was a thirty-year shingle. I think you're at about twenty-five, so maybe a little less. So you gotta start thinking about that. I don't think you wanna wait till.
Most of the sprinkler system was bad and that was already leaking inside.
Oh.
So we fixed that though, so. Now I guess it's just the roof is left, right?
So we've literally gone from top to bottom of the building?
No kidding.
Put the carp, old used carpets on the top.
Good idea.
And the last thing is public works.
DPW, Randy, I listened to the ending.
Of course, we got five minutes.
All right, so DPW.
That's a beautiful building, Pa.
Long, long.
Turnkey.
Do you wanna make the, do you wanna make the long story short?
He's still in the.
Long story short. I would, I would honestly, looking at it, understanding what Randy's up against with what he needs to try and do. And not because I like Randy and I'm on his side, but.
Didn't he work with you on one time?
Oh, he worked with, he worked with me. I'm, I'm the new guy.
Oh, you took his place.
Guy on, on his time bond. The, the building has served its, you know, need in terms of finding a place for them. But when you consider what they need to do, it doesn't have the facilities to work with, you know, work, help them do their job. In terms of maintenance bay, they can't provide a lift in any of those bays in that building.
We've had them in Canuck anyway, so that works out.
We can't, we can't adjust that type of a building to accommodate that either. It's, it's the pre-engineered building, it's the way it's designed. It's pretty much, it is what it is, and you're not gonna make a lot of changes. Could you add, you know, provide a, an outside building to do some of those things? You could provide additions, you could do all that. But if you consider the cost that it's gonna be to make those kind of adjustments relative to, if, if the town had a parcel that was sizable enough for them to relocate and build a building once and do it right, energy efficient, all the above, then you'd be in good shape. The building needs a new roof. You're just gonna end up falling into the, the energy code requirement. If you take the roof off, it's gonna need to comply with today's code. Conceivably gonna need to supplement the framing to be able to support the snow load. It's a very shallow roof pitch. So when you start to add up all those components, then, okay, we're gonna replace the roof. Well, there's a major chunk of change to do that.
Call a realtor.
Huh? Right. That's, that's what my, that's what my thinking is. I don't think Randy's far off the path. Speaking to Carl, I think he was kind of of a mind that that may be the direction that the town ought to be taking. There, there's a lot of other things that are issues there. He's, Randy's got a boatload of assets, equipment. Folks have spent a pile of money on, that's sitting out in the weather, you know, three hundred sixty-five days of the year. So those assets eventually, they're deteriorating as, as time goes on. New facility with some more storage to get those things out from that would, again, although it costs money, you'll be saving money, I think, in, in the long run with just providing that. So that was, that's it in a nutshell. That's not going through everything else that we saw.
No, we're well aware of our situation down there. Unfortunately, I think we still got, the bond is still another fifteen years.
Okay. One thing that we did do, Randy, we updated the, the spreadsheet. We did take another look at the, your service, the power for emergency generator. We adjusted that. We had a two hundred and fifty K BW unit based on the eight hundred amp service that he has. If you go through the process of reducing that service, new automatic transfer switch in your generator, provide a four hundred amp service to your building and, you know, size the generator to that, we reduced it in half. So the generator ends up being about sixty-five thousand dollars for the generator, thirteen thousand dollars to do all that, you know, connection business to it. I'm an architect, I'm not an electrical guy, so.
Questions?
Is there a, you have these broken up by, by buildings and stuff. Is there a priority list, just in general? Like, one is doing something with the fire department. Number two is something at the police station. Number four is, you have it.
We, we did not.
Done it that way.
We did not do that. I, I don't know, you know, I think the thought was to try and at least provide an outline of, of project per building and then.
Which you've done and that's, and that's good.
And the, the thing that I, I, the priorities based on, you can look at the categories and it'll tell you what should be done now, what should be done later. So I think you can only look at that and then try and budget what you can fit in that.
Right, but I'd hate to be, I'd hate to be, you know, putting whatever, a million dollars into the fire station when another high priority up there where, where eight hundred thousand could do and two hundred thousand dollars could go toward the police station just 'cause somebody stands in behind me. I use that as an example, you know what I mean?
Yes.
So if we have a million dollars to spend, what's the priority as far as per the whole picture? If that's possible.
Yeah, the, well.
Well, I, I think when we had our initial meeting, we kinda prioritized it. I mean, the fire department is the number one problem that we're facing right now, Gary.
Roof and wall, for sure.
Right.
Well, anyway, I mean, I think I like this kinda scenario.
It's a physical, that is a physical problem.
Right.
Whereas the police headquarters at this point.
I'm just making that up 'cause he's sitting behind me.
Sorry, no, but as, as an example, the police, the police headquarters, that has fewer issues to it specifically.
Yeah.
That, as long as they clean out the roof drain and that works, then they should be good. And then obviously, they, they would like to have their community room and they like to have the wash bay and they like to have the sally port. So those, those for me are the three priorities for the, for the police department. So depending on how you can save the money to be able to do those, then you'd make the chief a very happy chap.
But again, it still kinda goes back to.
There's priorities and there's wish lists, I mean.
Yes, right, right.
The structures themselves are the priorities to keep them going, no doubt.
Yeah, it, obviously, you'd like to have a community room, but you got the fire station that has a community room right next door. It's, we're a team, we work together. So, and I think the chief can appreciate that, that, that wouldn't be a high on our list. I don't think it'd be high on the finance committee's list. So those are the things that we as a town need to sit down and, and go over. But right now, I think it's, it's fairly obvious, we got a serious problem at the fire department. You know, and we, no need to point fingers or, you know, we just gotta get it fixed.
I just would like to see a hit list, priority of all of the buildings as far as that.
I think.
Instead of, you know, skipping across. And like, if Bob's got it, knows it, whatever, I just wanted.
Well, I think Bob is, is here on a daily basis and he can come up with a list.
One, one, one thing that I think is, is not big money, but would buy a, a lot of time, is to address, for like, for instance, with the windows, replace the gas sitting on the, on these windows. Replace the sealant on all the, all the remaining buildings. I would, you know, wait for the fire station because you folks are conceivably gonna be working on that. But sealant is, is crucial. So the more you can seal up that exterior envelope, the better off you're gonna be. So to your point, if you, you could bite some of these things off pretty quick because it's not big money and would buy, it would provide a.
Immediate benefit.
Immediate benefit to the bill.
What I'm gonna figure is, take all the As from all your buildings, put them in a little list. Here's your priorities for next year or three years or four years, whatever it's at the time. Those are the things.
Did you get it, Pat, here?
I, I don't have any.
Here, take a look at the As.
There's big decisions to be made, I mean.
We have to worry about the As, we have to worry about the As.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, poor DPW, that, that's a huge question. We can sink all the money we want in it, but realistically, the building isn't what it needs to be. And before you sink another penny in it, you gotta make a huge decision, fifteen years left on the bond or not.
Right.
That, do you build to the left of it and knock that down, do you not? Do you find another parcel somewhere else? And those are huge decisions.
One, one thing that is kicked around relative to that building that you folks probably already recognize is that because it is on a commercial way, that, you know, the, the ability of selling that is, could be a possibility. So that if you were able to build.
Somewhere else.
A new DPW on a different site. They stay there until that's done, they do the whole moveover and then sell that property and cross your fingers that you can make back something.
Make a profit.
No, we don't say profit in this town. Shame on you, there's not some profit.
That's what, that's what the guy who uses this in this chair told me a long ago, and we talked about the building.
Well, he's not there right now. So anyways, we hear you loud and clear.
I rest, I rest my case.
All right, we thank you very much. Very informative. All right, so.
Any other questions?
I think we're all set on the questions.
All right.
We thank the finance committee for attending.
Mr. Chairman.
And welcome to the new member.
Thank you.
She didn't go screaming out of the room.
Cause her path was impeded when she gets on the hallway.
We, we owe, yes, we're gonna, Russ, we're gonna print up new copies with the.
Okay.
Dates and the proper spreadsheets back in.
Okay.
So you have one thing and I'm sure we'll PDF it so that you have it electronically.
Okay, okay, that'll be good.
We have that electronically too, so we don't have to kill a thousand trees.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, so how many book copies do you want?
Carl needs one.
You didn't quit, right?
The town clerk needs one.
Then I'll let you go fast.
And probably we could use a work one for Bob's office. So if we had three and then electronically, that'd probably be good.
I like you very much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Always good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
They can't be the engineers to finish all this, you know? Well, really, I mean, that's what you need.
All right.
Can a town buy lottery tickets?
Yeah.
Yes. Give her that so I don't lose it. Thank you, Bob. All right, I don't know where our secretary went, but there she is. All right, we are a little behind, so we have to interview the reserve police officer interview. Come on up.
Kyle Schumaker.
Russ Fox.
Good to see you again. Kyle Schumaker, sir. Kyle Schumaker, nice to meet you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Interviewing for reserve.
I apologize.
Nope, no, it's public.
Please, thank you. A lot of watering being, you're all set? No, I'm all set, thank you.
We're gonna tell you now.
I see that.
All right.
Do we actually have questions?
We have questions.
I didn't turn in here.
We have questions. Thank you. Um, what we're gonna do is we have six questions. We're gonna go through those. And then we're gonna give you an opportunity to make any statement you'd like to make to the board.
Okay.
Uh, we haven't discussed when we're gonna make a decision, but it could come up under new business tonight.
Okay.
All right?
Sure.
So I will kick it off, and again, I'm sorry, you go by Pat, right?
Kyle.
Kyle, how'd I get Pat?
I've been called worse.
Doesn't look like a Pat.
Yes, I apologize.
How did I come up with Pat?
Starting my life, there was a Pat.
All right. Kyle, what have you done to prepare yourself as a reserve, prepare yourself as a reserve police officer?
I have already served six years in West Springfield as a reserve. And I've been in Granville before yours next month on their department as well. So I do have some experience as far as police work is concerned. I wanna get on the reserves in this town to be able to work, be in the field more, work more, learn more, become a better officer, get more experience.
Small one?
Pat, Kyle, can you give me an example of a time when you had to make a critical decision under stress?
Uh, yes, there was a time where I was in pursuit of a vehicle speeding. And in the area it was in, I felt that the speed and where the chase was going wasn't safe. So I called it off. You know, radio it in, whatever happens, happens. But at the end of the day, you know, up, up in Granville, you got a lot of corners, a lot of mountains and, you know, you, you don't wanna come down the mountain at seventy miles an hour and it's gonna pull out a driveway and it could change the whole day for everybody. So you have to make a judgment call of, even though you have adrenaline going, you have to make a judgment calls, what's safe for everybody else that's out there as well.
Okay, so I guess I'll call you PK.
Okay, that's fine.
There you go.
I'm never gonna live this one down, am I?
Not tonight.
Not the whole year, Wes.
All right, PK, describe a time when you did not get along with your superior officer or a coworker, and how did you handle the situation?
I haven't really had any issues with any of my superiors. If, you know, if there's, they're the ones that train me, they're the ones that are my boss and what they say goes. I've never had any kind of, I've never been written up for anything, I've never had any subordination issues. I'm not perfect, I'm sure I've made a few mistakes along the way, I've been told that, you know, this is right, this is wrong. I'm sure that's happened a few times, but never had anything serious as far as butting heads with anybody or disagreements that were gonna escalate to anything, anything crazy. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Long-term career plans?
I would like to, hopefully, the chief has made it clear to me that it'd be years down the road, but my long-term career plan is hopefully that when Southwick is looking for a full-time officer, I'm hoping to be able to fill that position when the time comes.
How do you feel you will fit in with the reserve program and what strengths do you bring to the position?
Um, I feel I'll fit in okay. Reason for it is because they do have some prior experience, not brand-new at coming out here. I mean, obviously, they do have to go through the training at Southwick to learn their rules and regulations, per se. So I feel I do have some experience for it. As far as fitting in, I think I'm a good people person, I'm a good listener, I learn fast. So I think I'd be a good fit with everybody.
All right, what do you think is the most important role of a police officer?
Conduct says a lot for you. I think when, when you're pulling over a vehicle and you're talking to a person, you talk to them like a human being. And I think that when you show up to any kind of call, obviously, you're professional, you find out what's going on with whatever's going on and have to make a decision of what, what the next step is gonna be.
And then on a side note, I'm gonna ask you for all three of us, even though I didn't tell them yet. So Chief.
Sir.
How many badges can you hold? Will he have to leave Granville if he comes to Southwick?
No, uh, no.
No, okay.
Or is holding chief up there, he doesn't have a problem, I don't have a problem with it at all. I never question what reserve does for a part-time job. I wouldn't ask a guy working at McDonald's, you know, what he does for a part-time job when he's a reserve for me. If any reserve doesn't meet the standard that we need for training or anything, then we would ask him to leave at that point in time. So I mean, it's never been an issue for another person having another badge.
Okay, then my other follow-up question is, do you feel you have the time to be in Granville, Southwick? And I think you're a reolder too?
I am, yeah. Granville, I just work, I have a one-six-hour shift a week.
Okay, so you're not up there a lot.
Yeah, there's, there's just, the, the budget just doesn't have enough for everybody to be out there, you know, two, three, four times a week with patrol with the amount of people we have. So I just, I'm just committed to that one-six-hour shift per week is what I'm committed to. I mean, if there's any others that open, I try obviously to pick them up when I can, so.
Right.
So I do have plenty of time. Real estate, you know, that's a roller coaster ride. Sometimes you have a few listings, sometimes you have a few buyers, but it's not, it's nothing I have a super big portfolio with. Sometimes you have a few listings, sometimes you have a few buyers, but it's not, it's nothing I have a super-big portfolio with at the moment, so.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, Kyle, you have the floor. Is there anything you'd like to say or ask?
I just wanna, I know I said earlier, I just wanna reiterate that, you know, I'm not just trying to get in the reserve department to do a part-time police officer job. I understand that that's what it is, but, you know, my initial goal is obviously to gain more experience, become a better police officer, and then hopefully down the road when the time comes for something full-time that opens up, that I can be considered a interview for that position and move forward.
Good, good. Any police background in your family, or this is just something that you've always wanted to do?
I got, I graduated in December two thousand and four and I started on West Springfield in two thousand and five on their, on their reserve department.
Yeah, okay, good.
So you got what, fourteen, fifteen years of doing it then?
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's quite a bit. All right, we thank you and like I said.
Thank you for your time.
I don't know if we're gonna make a decision tonight.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I won't forget you.
Thank you.
All right. Are we doing okay, reserve? Chief of Police?
Need more room in here, need a community room.
Yeah.
We have the fire department.
Yeah, we have the fire department.
We have, we have an auditorium we'll share as well.
Yeah, it's always there for you, it never needs.
Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
And we'll throw it out just real quick with interview number one, thank you for bringing him in tonight and interviewing. Something we have going on real quick, we have two, Officer Masai has to get qualified again because he was out injured. And Retchenberger is missing her firearms for shotgun and rifle. We're trying to plan that within the next two weeks. So we do know that you have to make your decisions, but we're gonna try and plug him into that training too, if it will speed up your process at all. Because not, then we have to just do another five days of training and pay a full-timer to be out there with him. So just part of the process. So I'm here tonight to talk about our ACL. As we know, Tracy Ru has left and gone to the clerk's office over there. She was a great employee down at the animal control unit. And definitely she's gonna be missed, you know, and working with her. We had a young lady that was a kennel, she cleaned the kennels on her own. She went out and got her own ACL certificate, certificate and went on training and got it herself. We've always had Tracy doing six hours a week of ACL. Liz has other obligation where she runs a rescue place down in Connecticut. She would like to do five hours a day and have Friday off. I don't have a problem with that because then I would plug in this, the kennel cleaner in the position of assistant ACL. She would work one hour a day in the morning, get the place set up, get it squared away. Then she would run the ACL on Friday itself for those six hours. We're not missing any of the six hours that we've always had, you know, prior to.
We're not going over any budget numbers.
Nope, I've sat down with Carl. She would still be doing her kennel cleaning. When she was done at nine o'clock, she would then go into her cleaning mode. But then her per, her scale pay would reduce back to what it was. We do know it's nineteen and a half hours is all she'd be scheduled for. There might be times, because remember, we have another line item out there for, it's called assistant animal control. So if Liz takes a vacation day, goes to training, she can step into that role, even though she's over the twenty, it's not a scheduled thing. So it's, I sat with Carl for quite a bit just to make sure all the numbers and hours, you know, would work. So that'd be my recommendation that we offer her.
What's her name?
That would be Dawn Angel. I know both Liz and Tracy have been very happy with her for the, as far as the cleaning part. I thought it was very impressive that she took the initiative herself. And she would also be someone would be on call. We do have one other part-timer, if she'd, you know, come out in the middle of the night if she had to and stuff, so that'd be another option for her. I was told to bring the ideas to you and let you know it's not gonna increase anything benefit-wise or anything. You know, take it from there.
Do you wanna make a motion contingent on all the?
The yada-yadas.
Yada-yada-yadas.
I don't think there's many yada-yadas from our colleagues, don't let me be got, because she's been too, yeah, she's already been, you know, she's been a part-timer for many years and everything and stuff like that.
Right, but if we don't say it.
I've learned many yada-yadas from Carl.
I'll second that, yada-yada.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, every person.
Can I just reiterate this?
Yada-yada.
Liz is gonna be five hours a day with Friday off. Dawn is gonna be one hour per day to make up that difference and she's gonna do the six hours on Friday.
Correct.
And she'll also be on call.
Yes, and she'll also be the other title of the kennel cleaner.
Okay, so she'll keep that.
Two roles.
Yeah. And then almost three, because then when Trace, Liz is out, then there's another line item that she gets paid out of.
Mr. Steinhardt will work out all the details with Chief Bishop so that it's properly recorded
You got it.
For Labor Council.
You got it. Good to go?
Uh.
Sir?
Pursuant to the building study, you did something to the front of your building?
Mm-hmm.
What did you do to the front of your building?
We had it pressure washed, we had the trees removed. And now we have a community service officer that's cleaning all the, person cleaning all the weeds out of the front of our police department. He's a National Honor Society student, he needs seventy-five hours and he's out there and weeding the whole front parking lot, doing a great job, actually John Camisa's grandchild.
Ah.
You know, and so he came to us and needed some community service, not, for a good way.
Are you gonna finish, because we got other places he can weed?
Well, he's, he needs seventy-five hours, so if we'll keep him on there. But I do, I wanted to thank Carl, he knows how much I've thanked him and Bob for cleaning up the front of that police department. If you haven't seen how good it looks now.
But that was, I think that was identified in part of this, the fifty grand was to just clean that up, to preserve it and keep it.
Right, well, I think the next step is they are talking about crowning it.
Well, we gotta fix the.
But the Mason that we reached out to, he had said it'd be better to actually do the pressure washing first. He would do the cleanup afterwards, but it gives a more visual deceit for sure what's, you know, what's out there and stuff, you know, so.
Everything else is in good shape?
As far as I'm concerned, everything's good to go. Went to the fireworks, bought a hat, had a good time, you know, what else could I ask for?
I was gonna talk about the parade at the end of the meeting, but since you're here, I, I would just like to mention for the record that sometimes come, wisdom comes with age and.
For some, not all for all.
For some. And some people, when it's a hundred-plus degrees, gets into an air-conditioned vehicle with bottles of water and does the parade. Other people march, you know? And I just wanna say, there's a learning curve.
Well, there's a pecking order and you're the boss right now.
Right, you're the chair, right?
There was only one in the air-conditioned vehicle, so was you.
Well, I wanna thank you.
We do the same for you, don't worry.
We're disposable is what it comes down to, when you are indispensable.
We're still a good time, it's an honor to walk with the guys out there. And I think the citizens really appreciate seeing at least someone out there marching that day.
No, it was, it was very good. We, I did have to cut a deal because of the animal parade, so the three of us have to.
What deal did you cut for that?
You gotta step it up a little.
He cut a deal for.
Talk about firearms and.
You know, so.
It'll be the same detail as last year.
Well, we already knew that, except for going black and white this year, not all.
Yeah.
Something about a shotgun wasn't mentioned and.
Yeah.
I missed all that.
And maybe a horse, like a gang, like a rogue gang.
At least they don't bring an elephant this year.
What they call it, rogue gang, what they used to call them back then.
Chain gang.
Chain gang, yeah.
Chain gang. Not that I would know.
Cool handle.
That's politically correct.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, gentlemen, do appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good night.
All right.
We always appreciate it.
Thank you, Sergeant.
I just stop by sometimes.
Good to see you.
Every time I start talking, I start coughing.
All right. Okay, Mr. Patel has asked to come in at a different time.
Can we pull that license once we issued it?
He has not received it.
Okay. And he hasn't even received it yet, has he applied for it?
He has, oh, you had.
He's gotta inspect it, right?
We had asked for it to be held until the tax were in.
Oh, perfect, okay, good, I feel good about that then.
Okay. So we've done all that. All right, then we're back to the action folder, correct?
Sure.
Okay. Vote to authorize one-day license for the Southwick Rotary to their concert series due to the cancellation of seven, seventeen nineteen.
So moved.
Uh, we're gonna have to revoke the rule of necessity because we have our corporate membership, so, and that's the reason why. So you've made the motion, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven A is a cancel.
Seven A is a cancel.
Uh, eight A is appointments, let's, we can take that up under old business. We did the town clerk.
Oh, you know what, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
In the one A, just till we do, do it right, because Cat, Carl's not here.
Yep.
There was a written motion that we probably should have done. And I don't know if we did it right. I noticed that when we were going over the tie-in bond stuff, I, action item one A.
On the town clerk.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
Motion to appoint Sherry Hawes as assistant town clerk collector, subject to passage of physical, financial terms set by CAO and the chairman.
All right, so that's, we're gonna modify that motion. Can you second that, Joe?
I'll second that, yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't want Carl yelling at us.
No, we gotta get him right over.
Thank you for getting that right. All right, then we will go on to no, I, I got Claus Anderson wrote call for.
I don't believe there was paperwork received, was there, Randy?
No, we're still waiting, so.
Okay, so that's.
Play solar, hopefully, we thought we had something in, but.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's, that's table.
And you did the, well, you're going under old business.
Okay, under old business. Let's just leave the appointments here for a minute. Need a motion to, oh, we already did it.
You did that, yeah.
Okay, so we did that. I'd like to bring up that the Better Angels would like to use the land room on August first at six-thirty PM, if that's all right.
Need a motion or?
No, just the board to support.
I think that's fine.
Okay, so that's official. All right, appointments.
There's another meeting that not, is it, you know that?
Yeah, yeah, that's when we moved it to six-thirty. Um, we've done police, we've done fire, we've done emergency management. We did all the department heads, parking clerks, gas inspectors.
No, no, no.
Of, okay, not gas inspectors. Wiring. So we've done quite a bit. I figured if we could knock off a few more tonight, the first one I'm going to suggest.
If you look at your list of all, we still need to be reappointed.
Okay.
We have this.
All right. The first one that I would like to mention is is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth committee.
Committee.
Uh, there was a little confusion, it was brought up at the last meeting. I'd like to, instead of every single person submitting something, since there's close to fifty people there, I'd like to suggest that we just accept the reappointment of all the existing members.
They were done. The last meeting, they were done. But what happened was you wanted reappointment slips, from what Robin said, you wanted reappointment slips from everybody to show their interest again.
Yep.
Yeah, and then appointment slips. But we appointed them, but we didn't have reappointment slips for them. So I asked Lisa to have them filled out because we didn't have any.
And the chairman of the two-fiftieth asked if we could.
I have no issue on the two-fiftieth, those people are volunteering their time on the, for, on an ad hoc committee for a specific purpose.
Yeah, so you just want a motion for them not to fill out.
I'll gladly make that motion for that.
Second?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Some of these don't tell you which ones are.
Well, it's easier to go sometimes if I.
Well, the one-year ones are easy, but the ones that are two-year and three-year appointments, you don't know where they are and they're.
Right, right. And, and I think once we get that new software up and running, you know, I think we're gonna be a lot better off.
Yep.
But I was just going to try to do a couple of these tonight.
You can use that. Can I take this back? Then I'll be able to write it while you say it.
Okay, you wanna take that?
Yeah, all this.
Okay.
There was also.
Take that back.
Yeah. You can.
All right. So anyways, if we could do a few of these tonight. And what I'm gonna suggest is the ad hoc open space recreation committee. And make a motion to reappoint those people. We thought we'd be done, but the state threw us a little curve on wanting additional stuff. So we're not gonna be able to end it. We're gonna have to continue for a couple more meetings. So if that's acceptable to the board?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The agricultural committee? They're all one-year appointments?
Uh, I noticed in this stack of stuff, I'm not sure if it's in my folder or in this list, but there was a person that's on Ag that was asking to interview to be on community preservation.
Right.
So how do you wanna handle that?
Can we talk about that for a minute?
Go ahead.
So are we appointing people to the CPC?
Yes, until the next election.
Okay, so we are, okay.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I, right.
And, but we need to know who's up.
Yeah, how many seats are up to reappoint to?
On which one?
The CPC.
I think only one. One or two.
Say it right here.
Here, that's why I brought the book.
Because that's not even.
I thought there was.
It's actually, the list we have is actually incorrect.
Okay, this comes from the treasurer's office, so in the book, what does it say? Are we missing somebody?
Well, Dave Sutton's the planning board appointee, but he's appointed by that board and it's just like.
Right, community preservation, selectmen's appointed.
Right.
Right, we have.
But see, they might be staggered. In other words, these are the only ones that need to be appointed this year.
That's my, that's my, so that, that makes much more sense. So then there's only one.
Right.
That we need to appoint.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I see that?
So these.
Who was that?
Yeah, so.
We, we have to appoint Bob Horchek. Bob Horchek.
Or not.
Or not.
Right, here, see, see these?
All right, so.
These are the only ones that have to be appointed this year. The other...
So this book is incorrect?
Uh, let me see.
This list is correct.
That says who served.
No, this is year date due for reappointment or reelection.
Okay.
List of all those that still need to be appointed. So that was the first page of this, is this list here. So that's why I was saying this, I thought this list was wrong. It's not wrong. It's this Mr. Sutton must have been reappointed already by his board? I don't know.
Right.
I just know that he's, he's the designated...
Four, three years, if this isn't the third year, is the way I take it from Jess.
Yeah, I...
See what I mean?
Yeah, I...
See that?
Can I see that?
I don't have that one. That, oh, I don't know that that's right either.
I, you know, that's why we bought this software.
CPC, okay.
Well, yeah, cause we found an issue on another board too.
Yeah, okay, so Joe Didi.
Hey.
Oh, okay. Hi. Okay, so Bob... Bob Horchuk has to be appointed to, for two thousand twenty.
Yeah, but this is two thousand nineteen.
For two thousand twenty.
Fiscal.
That, that's the year we're in.
This is calendar. This is calendar year. That's the problem.
Wait, what?
No, that's fiscal year.
This, this is calendar year. Because we have to do it, yeah, it's calendar year. And this is fiscal year. Yeah.
Then why, why do we do our appointments in July?
Because...
Then why do we do appointments in July and not in January?
Uh, cause we've been doing all that forever. But this is the two thousand, uh, eighteen town report for the year two thousand eighteen. Okay? So, we actually have two lists running and we've been doing it forever.
Then why don't we try to do things that we can agree on? And then we'll go back and see if we can't find out whether the book is correct or this is correct.
I know that her. Because Jess keeps two lists running. So if you have a question on something, let me know and I'll ask her about it. But when I do the town report, she sends me from January first till December thirty first for the book.
Okay.
And then, the other list that she has running is this. Okay? And only has the two thousand twenty appointments on the list.
Okay. What?
And yes, it's a nightmare.
Okay. Then why don't we do things tonight that we can agree on? Like economic development. Okay? We have Amber Bach...
The open space days?
Open space is fine.
Okay.
Okay. Amber Bach, Serena Fuller, Michael, and Craig Sals. Can we agree on that?
You can.
Yes.
Oh, thanks. So moved.
A second?
I don't wanna reappoint anybody. But I'm gonna second this one.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And you have a vacant position.
For the record, none of them submitted their letter of interest.
Yeah, and that's what I'm gonna say next, is like, so, no one's got letters of interest?
Well, yeah, there are some. Keep, if I keep them in order.
I did.
I told you.
No request for reappointment slips received today for CPC. Nobody wants to be put back on.
Okay. Report...
Conservation Commission, reappointment requests.
There they are.
No one...
And then, those are the requests that we're answering canal.
All right. That was my next one. Lake Management.
Come out.
So moved.
Uh, second it?
There was no other extra people that's, that asked for Lake Management to join it?
You would go, yes, there was. And you would go to, at the end of this list?
Yeah.
All right, you have an appointment request from, well, the two fiftyth.
Yeah.
Uh, for CPC, Lake Management, Channel fifteen, I speed it up. So if you keep going in your pile?
Yep.
Once you have the reappointments?
Yep.
That I received filled out?
Requested.
It'll go into appointment.
Appointment request for L M C.
Probably reappointment slips.
Can I ask a question?
There's one email.
Absolutely. What's the question?
I guess I'm getting wrong. And we're already communicating clearly.
Okay, this is what Robin did. He asked for, for reappointment, um, slips from everybody already on a board committee.
Right. See if they're still interested in it.
Then, if somebody knew wanted to be on it?
Okay.
Then they filled out appointment requests.
Right. So I guess to be the asshole this week, cause I, I still haven't asked my question. So, every single one of these is in the same bloody penmanship. So...
She filled them out for conservation? And she filled them out for...
Wow, that was nice of her.
But every single one of them is in, uh, maybe I'm not a bad, uh, good... Open space and conservation, at least the ones I looked at, are written by the same person.
Yep, she did it for all of them.
She just whipped them all in, so we don't even know if, for example, I just happen to have Mr. Franka's paper in front of me, if he wants to be on this board. Cause somebody whipped in his application for him.
Right.
All right.
So we asked them to do it.
So I'm the ass today, but that's... No, it's just a disappointment.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
It's a disappointment. Uh, here's E D C. No request for reappointment slips received to date.
Yep.
That's all good, yeah.
You need to piece this up, I'm guessing.
Well, a little late for that, Charlie.
We already took care of him, Mike, we get it. Your heart's in the right place, you're here.
Yes, that's very true.
All right.
So you have one applicant here.
You know what I mean, I thought, you know, so just so clear for next year is, we really wanted everybody to send us a little note saying, you know, this is what I've done on the commission, I'd like to, or boarder commission.
Yeah, I think I'm doing a great job.
I'm doing a good job, I'd like to continue, I have things I wanna do, yada, yada. And if someone else wants to submit them again, you know, you know, we have new people that wanna be on a board or commission, great. Let's, let's have that discussion.
I wanna see, uh, Paul Murphy.
He did...
He took the time, I don't care, but he took the time to email us to do something.
He couldn't find...
He didn't have to fill out a form. This is, I know it's government and all, but an email would work for me.
And he did email.
Who, Murf? Yep, good for him.
He couldn't find it, so emailed me and...
Right, and that's all you're asking is, is there something out there? Is anyone interested in anything?
Is this your application?
Well, he said he gave us three papers, he didn't.
So... Basically...
Nice.
All right, we're back to Lake Management.
They have, is Murf is already on that committee?
No.
I know.
No.
And he's looking for appointment to which committee?
The L M C. And the only reason I bring it up is we've asked people to do this, so we should at least look at it. Look who's on there. And if you don't wanna make this change anymore?
Was that committee full or they got room?
I think they could have as many as they want.
Of course they can.
But it is, I was looking at the same penmanship and everything, but it's funny.
And, and is most of the people on Lake Management also on the canal subcommittee?
Most of them here.
Both.
But there is requests. He just wants to be on the L M C, I believe.
Well, look at this one, so Southfield, Connecticut. I guess he can be on it, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I got thuggies of everybody.
What do you have?
I gotta connect with you.
Randy, have a great evening.
Randy.
No, it's two different perks.
Oh, two different?
Yeah. Those are the only two new ones for two fifty. But you're still on the reappointments.
I'm looking at reappointment request for Lake Management Canal.
We're just trying to knock off a few of them tonight.
No, it's fine.
Knock off a few of them next meeting.
So straight order. So you have L M C and then you have the canal, the subcommittee.
Right.
Yeah, they go in the order of the list you're looking at right now. All the papers behind it. Do you take that list right there?
Yeah.
Everything behind it is in that order.
Okay.
Now, it'll start with, you know...
And there's a request from Murf in here somewhere?
Yep, it's an email.
Just a tiny...
And it would be under, yeah. See, if you took this list right here, and put it here? It'll probably in order.
That's just cute. So at least the implementation committee?
It's typed.
Typed, they're all out the same.
That's a lesson.
Yeah, at least it's very... Right, at least it's, I can argue, but they're all typed and not all handwritten by the same person. Boy, we got so nervous.
All right, so, I'll make a motion for Lake Management and the canal, and I'll also... Does anyone have an objection to putting Mr. Murphy on as an associate to Lake Management? Or is that, do they... I, I have no objection to it.
I mean, they got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven people now. Would you mind just appointing those people and asking them if they have a problem with additional people being added?
That's the basis for my question. I appreciate Mr., you know, Mr. Murf.
That's right.
We had very spirited discussions over that whole personal watercraft issue, and he got involved in it. I appreciate that. So if he, if, if they so see fit to have him, I would have no problem to appoint him.
Can you second that?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lake Management Canal Commission. Make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Yep.
All in favor? Aye.
And you want me to ask the Lake Management if they want him on there?
Well, if they got room for one more.
If they have room for one more. I know the answer's if you're gonna ask if they want him. No, that's not their decision. It's just if there's a space at the, is there an extra chair there or not?
Okay.
Did we already do the local emergency planning committee?
Yes.
Okay, that, we did not do it.
No. If it's on here, you have not done it. L E P C usually just goes to your meeting.
Oh, I swore in for it already. I did it last Friday. Cause I, I know I was appointed by this board two weeks ago.
You were, right, you were appointed.
You were appointed by the board.
So I'll make a motion for the rest of them. I'm not gonna be miserable alone.
Well, Sergeant Sanders is gonna be retiring in a month, so I don't think we need to reappoint him.
And there's two replacements?
Yeah, one of them is...
Bishop sent over.
Mark Siegel?
Yes.
Is one? Okay. All right, so, motion made, second?
Yep.
All in favor? Aye. All right, that's enough for telling that.
He's got Mark Siegel on here already. And, and Rich Stefanowitz from the fire department.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. We did have two people that wanted to do, uh, two hundred, two fiftieth?
Yep.
Yeah.
Mr. and Mrs. Parks.
Oh, nice.
And they've been attending the past couple of meetings as volunteers. So I certainly accept the motion to appoint.
I would gladly make that.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you wanna try to do some of the cable tonight, or...
I, I was gonna say, should we, can we bring those people in? Do you mind, or you want me to do it separately, or do you wanna? Since that's a new committee? Or do you wanna just take them as they came? Cause I did speak to three or four people that were interested in the... You're talking about the fiber? Or you went to something else?
Well, well, we, we got that whole, we got the fiber committee. We got the cable TV.
Ah, sorry.
Channel fifteen.
Sorry, yes.
That's still around? That is Dennis Clark, Art Boyes, not offered to volunteer, and there's a woman's letter of interest.
Well, that also wants to be on the fiber out there.
Right.
Right. So, do you want to, uh, meet with people? Kinda spearhead that?
Yeah, I think we should.
And, uh, and kinda feel people out and see if they, any of those people interested in fiber options might also be interested, like that young lady and...
Well, that's what she called.
Sure.
Is that okay with you, Joe?
So there's only two for the internet? I actually spoke to both of these people, and there was one more.
Perry.
Yep, Perry and Caitlin.
Yep.
Okay.
So... Are you appointing them or are you waiting?
Mr. Moglen is gonna reach out to people? And spearhead that? And get back to us. There you go. All right, we're moving on. Uh, any other old business?
Uh, I did attend the Board of Appeals meeting last night. There was some ambiguity around a potential, um... There was a confusing posting and public hearing post, uh, held last night by the Board of Appeals by the chair. And it was a, an application by the chair, and it was erroneously advertised by, just, it was a mistake. And, you know, when they did their form letter, so it was posted... The application of the chair, and it was posted by the chair, which obviously you can't do. They handled it all correctly, he withdrew his application. It's gonna end up coming probably here. The applicant believes he has a legal easement to property located off the end of Lincoln Road. And, um... Everyone was in agreement that the Board of Appeals was not the place to even discuss that. Um, especially being, he, he being the chair of that committee, and it is, is not the proper forum. So, um, that, we just had a discussion, and he's going to gather the documents that he has, including the legal recorded easement, and bring that here. Since we're the, the town, and then it was probably sent it to Conservation, is the owner of that land that he supposedly has the easement over.
Okay, I was wondering that.
So...
I spoke to Attorney Beglin concerning the issue. And Mr. Beglin has spoken to Paul and advised him of several things. Number one, a survey.
Mm-hmm.
You know? And then, uh, once that was done and he could prove clear title, then there would be the issue of road improvements that would be borne by him. So, he, Attorney Beglin has talked to Paul, and first of all, he's straightened him up that, no, you can't. The Board of Appeals can't do anything. It's a legal issue. You have to take these steps first, and then you could, uh, go to the planning board, if in fact you could prove the, you know, and get a Form A. To, cause he wants to construct the house. Careful. You know? So, so, uh, town council is aware of the issue. And so they, they, they have advised him of what they believe he should do.
Got it. I just wanted to get on the record, it was a, the posting piece was in error, it was just a clerical piece. They used, you know, they used their standard form?
Yep.
That they always use, and that's why it was, it looked, it looked the way it did. And then as far as the rest of it, whether it's a building lot or a lot or whatever, that's for other people to solve.
Yeah.
Correct.
There you go. All right, any other old business?
No, I was gonna bring up the cable committee, which we already did.
Okay. New business, notification training sessions, that Labor Council will proceed with those. All right, and that's, you know, kinda to reaffirm everything that we've, uh, talked about in the past to make sure everybody is, uh, still in compliance. Uh, the E V charging stations. I, I did talk to, uh, the gentleman from, uh, Eversource. And he is, uh, kinda explained to me what they're doing in other communities. Uh, it, they're not expecting any quick answers. He said they just got through with, working with Amers, and they, that took them over a year just to have discussions. There are different programs available. Unfortunately, Southwick doesn't meet the criteria to get the full boat. You know? So if we did decide to, uh, have something on town property, uh, there would be definitely a cost involved. Uh, but what he is basically asking, if we would, as a town, look at it. And, and, uh, he's, he made a suggestion that what Amers did, and, and it could be done by the C A O, town planner, uh, maybe Economic Development Commission, you know, three or four people, uh, to look at sites available in the town. And not just town property, but, uh, private property also. You know, I, of course, suggested, I thought, you know, off the top of my head You know, I, of course, suggested, I thought, you know, off the top of my head, that it would be much more beneficial to have it down at Big Y to meet the, the criteria, and they're already working with Big Y in several communities, that, uh, that might be the better location.
Yeah, you don't even know if Big Y's looking at it.
Well, they, they're, Big Y, I, I guess, has agreed to do, I, I think he did four or five communities.
Gotcha.
Where they got Big Y's. But those communities where they're going to do it at Big Y meet the criteria for the full.
Funding.
The full boat.
Gotcha.
In other words, EverSource puts in everything.
Yep.
Okay, so it's, it's ready to go from day one, and there's no cost, so. So, if, with the board's permission, I'd like to ask the Town Planner and CAO and maybe Economic Development Commission and, uh, to look at it. Uh, they can meet with, uh, Timothy and, uh, go over different sites, and, uh, I, I, you know, again, off the top of my head, I thought, I didn't see it working for any of the town's property.
No.
You know?
And anytime we can put Carl on something when he's not here, it's a win-win.
Okay, so.
Second Joe's motion.
Yep, uh, CAO, Town Planner, didn't you say Economic Development?
If Economic Development wants to work with it.
Yeah, I, I don't know anything about the program.
It's, it's basically, uh, charging stations.
Right, I know.
Ever, EverSource.
I'll reach out to this guy tomorrow and see if he can send me a little more info.
No, we, I already sent all the info to Carl.
Okay.
So Carl has it all. Uh, he, he's got the.
There's more?
Right.
Okay.
Carl can click on, get all the additional information, but basically, they're, they're reaching out to communities first to see if we wanna establish a, a charging area on any town property, uh, and then they would go and look at business property, you know?
I was up at Pride the other day in South Hadley, and they got, like, a ton of them lined up in their back.
Yep.
Section, yeah, where, that's the Hadley Bridge where Fork is.
Right.
At Pride?
He built a new Pride there, right, where that fork could just be a tiny restaurant?
I mean, I.
And there's a ton of them. Two are being used, I was surprised.
Well, you know, I.
I guess that's.
But the premise of that, I mean, that's why it's, I, it's an, it's an excellent idea to have it at a place where people are going, will, will be staying, because they're there for an hour.
Right.
Right, so, I could see why Mr. Bolduc would do it. Because now he's got someone in his store for a nap.
Absolutely, yeah.
Or his restaurant or whatever.
Right, that's, that's how that place is set up.
Big Y sees that appealing too, someone's going grocery shopping, they can plug in their car and do their shopping.
Right.
I don't think we necessarily want people at the Town Hall for an hour or two unless they happen to have the car or whatever, but.
Well, that's what I, I talked to, when I was talking to Timothy, I said, well, you know, look, you know, we gotta be concerned about security, you know, and who, who, who's gonna make sure it's plowed, and there's lights, and checking it, and all this other stuff. I said, I don't think it's, it's really, I couldn't think of any site that we own where it would, where we could fit it.
In shopping centers in Connecticut, Manchester, there's one area where there's like ten or fifteen of these things.
What they want.
All funded by Tesla.
Yeah, what they wanna do is a place like Big Y, and I'm just using that as an example, where they have some green, you know, some lawn, some grass, where they can put in all their equipment without cutting into any pavement.
Of course.
Right, set it up, okay, there you go.
Yeah.
And it's in somebody's parking lot that they're already plowing, they already got lights out there, they're open seven days a week.
Yep.
It's perfect, it's perfect.
Keep it simple.
But, uh, so anyways, you know, I, I told them I thought it would be something the town should look at, because obviously, there, there are more and more people that, uh.
Well, yeah.
Are going in that direction, so, all right, so, boom, boom, uh, the next thing I had under new business is, is there seems to be, uh, a, a little issue, uh, not a serious issue, the cemetery. And the old cemetery, and the funding we got from Community Preservation and Historical and.
We're gonna do a war reenactment over there, aren't we?
What was that?
It's gonna be a real one. Are we gonna do a war reenactment over there?
We, we might be doing it sooner than you think. So, I know you don't like work sessions, but I'm gonna suggest that that might be the better way of bringing all the people involved in, from the sexton to the cemetery commissioners, to Community Preservation, um.
Yeah, no one's on vacation, you know, look, yeah.
The, uh, you know, woman they'd like to perhaps hire as a consultant to do the training for the volunteers, that we get them all in the room and, and kind of go over everything, because the, um, uh, the gentleman that's doing a lot of the volunteer work is getting frustrated because of the.
Systems in place, aren't as quick as everything else.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
It, it is, it's hard.
So rather than have him get frustrated, if we're all on the same page, that, so that, I'd, like I told them, I said, you don't have the authority to sign off. The cemetery commissioners have to sign off on this, and, and they have to be part of this, you know, and especially if their, their employees are gonna be doing some of the training and assisting. You know, you gotta have the cemetery, and if the Community Preservation wants their information, I said, they need to have that information, so. So. No problem?
No, not at all.
We'll set up a work session.
Yeah.
You know?
And you want, do you know when you want the work session?
I, I, I think that because of the heat, that they're not gonna be doing a lot of work down there probably till the end of August, September. The old cemetery, right, so I think if we do something in early August, you know, six o'clock.
Well, that'll give me time to make sure we can make it on a certain day.
That's the biggest problem, right, and I have applications.
What is good for you guys? Monday, uh, Tuesday night?
We could do it on the off weeks, so we're not meeting. For me, it works anyway.
Okay.
Yep, sounds good.
All right. And you want CPC and cemetery? Is there any else?
Or at least the right representative from each to help this process move forward.
CPC, cemetery.
I don't need six CPC guys here just pissing the morning, I need the one that makes decisions.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Nicely.
Right, right, that's all you need is a representative.
The go-to guys for each one of these, so this gets smoothed out.
Right, historical, you know, I mean, you could have the Dave Gunn, who's the Community Preservation member plus Chairman of the Historical Commission, he could be the one member, you know?
Okay.
Uh, and then the Cemetery Commissioners, I, I think the Sexton should be here.
Carefully, yeah, they have the post, if they have a forum of any of those committees.
Okay.
Do we need the accountant here to help explain what she's looking for?
That might be a good idea, you know?
Just so we all understand.
No good deed goes unpunished, Mr. Fox.
Cemetery Director, CPC, and accountant.
And you might as well have the Sexton here too, since.
Oh, absolutely.
He's, he's in charge of, uh, employees. All right, any other new business?
Are we gonna discuss that?
Oh, yeah.
Usually wait till after we adjourn.
Okay.
And then say, oh, no, we forgot, we gotta wait a week or two.
All right, uh, we've heard, uh, from the, uh, applicant for the Reserve Police Officer Position, Kyle.
PK.
And we've heard Chief Bishop and Chief Bishop.
CB, now.
Would like to, uh, us to act on this as quickly as possible, are we comfortable making a decision tonight?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so, I don't think it's gonna be, um, uh, you know, as long as everyone understands we're not hiring full-time anytime soon, and, um, you know, they all can come and go, but we're very shorthanded, and we do need reservists, because I'm tired of watching Westfield and other towns take the money out there directing traffic, because we just don't have enough officers, so hopefully it helps, it works out.
Are you making that a form of?
I'll make that a form of a motion.
Are you seconding that?
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If, if you wanna notify Chief Bishop so he could notify Kyle before.
Can't have two Kyles on the police.
Not Kyle before.
It's gonna have to be PK. Gotta change his name, sorry.
Only if he takes the PK, he can.
Okay.
Only if he says it's PK, yeah.
Any need for an executive session tonight?
No, just wanna, before we sign off though, I do wanna, you know, we did have a, that event went off very well on Saturday, the one call away event, and the motorcycle ride was.
Yep.
Handled very nicely, went very smoothly, peacefully, was hot as hell, but can't control that. The only one takeaway is, we need to make sure that. Mr. Johnson and Building and Browns is notified when there is an event scheduled at Wally Park. And that they can manipulate the sprinklers.
Never, we want them to run like that.
When you're in the middle of setting up all your vendors and they get all their product out, and then the sprinklers go off.
Did they?
And we're scrambling around to try to find someone who does it, and I have to start calling people at home on Saturday to come down, so either, we need to fix that, just, you know, live and learn, right? That, no criticism, just live and learn.
Yeah.
But it was a great event, well attended.
I'll bring Homer buckets next time, we'll just put them on.
Well, that's what they did, they had Homer buckets on all the heads.
There you go, yeah.
But, uh, you know, thanks to Mr. Sutton and that whole crew that put that on, they did a great job, and, um, you know, for a very worthy cause.
I need a motion twitcher.
I'll make that motion now.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.